Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I could call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Rosa Torres.
Present.
Mitchell Moffett.
Present.
Paul Mendez.
Present.
Kim Lerman, excused. April Campos, excused. Rachel Teal, excused. Jay Hemler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are five members present. We do have a quorum.
Excellent. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and also on Spectrum Charter Cable PSC Channel 191 and will be re-broadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded so you can view it and watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on-demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available in the back table so you may follow along with the meeting. And at this time, I'd like to ask everyone to silence your cellphones and to prevent any interruptions in the meeting. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, state your name and city of address for the record. Before we begin, I need to remind the audience that the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening, not only to be fair but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits the Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which a member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. Any objection to a Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration this time regarding any of the items on the agenda tonight? Let the record show there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any of the Planning Commission members hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations here as well. We as a Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed onto the official record of the city council we use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of the opportunity. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes, which are from November 17, 2022. These minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had the opportunity to take a look at these. And if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Moffett. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is, we have no old or unfinished business, so we will move right into the public hearing section. In the public hearing section, we have item A, which is the first item on the agenda, is the mixed-use district code amendment, Record CA 2022-003. And I'll turn it over to staff for a comment.
Good evening, excuse me, members of the Planning Commission. This item is a proposal to amend our existing waterfront development district. The proposal would establish a new mixed-use zoning district that would be applicable citywide. The original waterfront district, just for memory, was adopted by city council in January of 2021. Outside of the waterfront development district, which today is applicable only to the Osprey Point neighborhood where the Port of Pasco operates, outside of that area, the city does not provide a development standard or regulations for mixed-use projects, sites, or buildings. So the request for a text amendment would identify a set of modifications to the waterfront development district, amend it, rename it, and allow the facilitation of mixed-use sites citywide and implement it under the comprehensive plan, mixed residential and commercial land use. The proposal implements and aligns with several policies, plans, and projects of the City of Pasco, including the 2018-2038 Comprehensive Plan and the city council goals specifically for economic vitality. Staff is supportive of the proposal. And we highlight the various regulations in place that the intent of the mixed-use zoning district is met. Attached to the staff report, you will find a summary of changes prepared by the proponent of the mixed-use zoning district, along with the draft ordinance itself. And with that, I would like to introduce Emily Weimer from AHBL Consulting, who has prepared a presentation for you this evening.
Hello. Thank you, Jacob. My name is Emily Weimer of AHBL. Please let me know if you can't hear me all right. We are located at 5804 Road 90, Suite H here in Pasco. I am the applicant's representative. AHBL provides land use planning, surveying, and other services here in the tri-cities and across the state. I wish I could join you in person, but unfortunately, my baby brought home RSV from daycare. So I do really appreciate this opportunity to join you in virtually. First of all, we would like to thank staff for their assistance throughout this process. And staff collaborated with us to sort of fine-tune our application. We were able to implement some changes that, based on staff comments. And so the proposal you see tonight is truly a collaborative effort to really try to get the best product for the citizens of Pasco here to you tonight. We drafted this text with flexibility in mind. We envisioned new living opportunities, ones with cohesive pedestrian-oriented community with nearby compatible neighborhood shops and offices. So I would like to go through the presentation. I don't know who has control of the slides.
Just say when, Emily.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, a little bit about our background. We are the applicant on behalf of a local developer. The background is the Comprehensive Plan designates multiple areas in your city as this mixed residential-commercial zone, but there is no corresponding or implementing zoning code. So our proposal is to amend an existing zoning code, which was written for Osprey Point, this waterfront development district, but to make it applicable to citywide. And instead of creating a brand-new mixed-use district, we decided with staff suggestion to work within the existing code. So the proposal is to rename 2517 to mixed-use district and modify it for the citywide applicability. Next, please. Okay, this is an overview of the changes and the specific code citations. New are building design standards, screening standards, temporary business standards, and sign standards. Revised were the dimensional standards, building height, landscaping, and then the transportation design standards. So overall, we kept the original Osprey Point under its own set of design standards because it's a fairly limited area and this code was written specifically for that area. It's already been built out and there are development agreements in place for that area. So we did suggest separate standards for citywide and then separate standards for the Osprey Point. Next slide, please. And then this is just the purpose statement of the mixed-use district. I won't read all of it, but we highlighted some important parts. Compatible is really important. Integrated mix of this commercial with residential uses with an intent to provide that high level of diversity in housing types. Ground floor neighboring commercial and a cohesive bike and pedestrian-oriented community. So that's the purpose of this new proposed district. Next, please. Excuse me. These are the development standards for building heights in the new proposed district. 85 for commercial office, educational government, 94 mixed-use buildings, 40 for single-family attached and duplexes. And the 40-foot does align with your other higher-density districts. And 45 for the courtyard apartments and condos also aligns with your existing higher-density districts. And then we added a residential accessory structure, so a shop at 15 feet. Next, please. We did add some landscaping requirements. We want this to be more of an elevated district. Specifications on what we want to see versus what we don't want to see. So we don't want to see artificial materials. We'd rather see live vegetation. And then a minimum requirement of spacing for landscaped areas for trees and shrubbery. And then landscaping on pedestrian walkways because we want this to be a pedestrian-oriented district. Next, please. And then here are some design standards related to transportation. We did add some information, sorry, requirements on street layouts. We did think about connectivity. I think that was important to city staff as well. We said the street layout must be pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, promote function, safety, and aesthetics. We are proposing a maximum block length of 600 feet. And we do give it an exemption unless there are no other practical alternative available. And we are suggesting that cul-de-sacs are not permitted unless extenuating circumstances. And then finally, we are suggesting that private streets may be permitted, subject to certain requirements. Next, please. We also added something called building design standards that are not applicable to Osprey Point since, again, they have those development agreements. But the intent behind this is to provide more of a high-quality design using aesthetically pleasing materials and designs. This will help foster a safe pedestrian-oriented streetscape. And it might hopefully upgrade the visual identity of this district. And finally, hopefully reduce the impact of parking lots and blank walls. Next, please. And we also had some architectural requirements. And we did talk to an architect to see the feasibility of all these different materials. So we did review this work with our client's architect. You can go to the next slide, please. Oh, actually, can you go back one spot? I did want to highlight one important thing. We are suggesting that sidewalk seating is permitted outside things like cafes, but there must remain five feet of unobstructed sidewalk for ADA purposes and circulation. Next. Okay, so these screening standards are also new, not in the existing code. We did look at the ID2 overlay standards and they're modeled mostly from the overlay standards, but we did change a little bit based on staff feedback. This was one of them. Outdoor equipment, materials, and goods should be screened with 100% sight-obscuring fence. And then finally, mechanical equipment, like a gas meter, should be screened from public view. Next slide, please. And we did also add temporary business standards, also similar to the ID2 overlay standards. These will be permitted on lots that are fully developed. And there's some requirements based on how far they have to be from right-of-way and from residential districts. And we did specify that only temporary and easily removable accessory equipment should be allowed, such as tables and chairs. And then we did list things that should not be allowed. I think artificial turf was one of them. This was based on staff feedback, too. Next slide, please. Sign standards is also new and is also similar to the ID2 overlay standards. Highlights are unsafe signs are prohibited. We do list permitted signs. And we did establish a relief process for any grievances. Next, please. And then finally, we have this design recommendation section. It establishes desirable, undesirable, and prohibited elements of project design. This is to offer flexibility. And it allows design review to be contextually based because some materials may look really good on one particular site when it's done well or it could look terrible on a different design. So it's really hard to come up with a list of materials or designs that do indeed not work because design is not always black and white. So we wanted that flexibility. Next slide, please. And then here's just the continuation from that previous slide. Blue is desirable. For example, wall articulation, multi-plane roofs, upper floors that have a step-back. Undesirable, that yellow category, large blank flat walls. Not fun to walk next to, kind of boring. Things like unpainted concrete, corrugated metal, and large setbacks to accommodate parking. Nobody really wants to look at that. And then prohibited, disjointed parking areas, those can be unsafe. And then overabundance of access driveways or unsafe locations. So those would be prohibited. Next slide, please. Okay, so that's all I have presented tonight. I just wanted to highlight, we did draft this text with a comprehensive plan in mind to address that existing deficiency between this mixed-use land use in your comprehensive plan and the lack of an implementing zoning district. So we are very excited for this opportunity that the proposed code amendment will offer for development in the city. My office is located in this land use designation, so I'm personally excited to see what kind of new developments will crop up near me. So I'm happy to answer any questions about this proposal. Sorry for the terrible cough and voice. Thank you for your consideration.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant or city staff on this? Go ahead, Commissioner Henderson.
Why are cul-de-sacs not allowed? That seems a little restrictive.
Would you like me to answer that or city staff?
Well, Emily, go ahead and if we'll chime in as necessary.
Okay. So we suggested that cul-de-sacs were not the best in this district because it's not just a residential district. It's a mixed-use district and we want it to be walkable with good circulation. And cul-de-sacs aren't really great for pedestrian or biking circulation or urgency access. So we just wanted to really concentrate on the best use of land in terms of walkability and bikability and those mixes of uses. Excuse me.
Good with that? Commissioner Henderson, any more questions on that?
Excuse me, I... I don't quite agree with that, but okay.
Do you have specific feedback for staff or the applicant on how they may want to change it? Or how you'd like to see it?
No, I just, I don't, I just find it, you know, in the spirit of creativity and wanting to do interesting things, you know, a cul-de-sac may be an exciting option and alternative. So I guess I don't agree with just outright ruling it out. So anyway, that's all I had to say.
Great, thanks. That was good feedback.
Commissioner Henderson, if I can add, the draft ordinance actually provides some provisions where a cul-de-sac would be permitted. It's not an outright allowance, however, in cases where topography, land constraints, environmental constraints, infill development, and a variety of other potential implications, a cul-de-sac would be allowed. The caveat would be that there would be a pedestrian connection still. The pedestrian connection would still be a requirement. So in the case that you could justify cul-de-sac, you would be limited to 300 feet and a pedestrian connection would still be required. But there's sort of the criteria for which you would need to justify where a cul-de-sac would be permitted.
Okay, thank you. Great. Other questions? Commissioner Moffett? He answered your question. Awesome. Excellent. Anyone else? Commissioners for staff or the applicant?
I had a question on... So it appears what we're doing is we're saying we had this waterfront development district for Osprey Point that we did a year or two back. We're saying, okay, well, now we want to turn that into a mixed use, but we're still going to have all these sections and provisions for Osprey Point in the mixed use. Will this work, like, say we come along and Broadmoor has a waterfront district? Are we going to need to add a Broadmoor section? Or will this mixed use actually work for Broadmoor's waterfront district if we did that or somewhere else in the city?
Yes and no. In fact, some of the challenges with... I guess the reason for not modifying specifically the Osprey Point code and leaving that as is was the intent and really the end result of the waterfront development district are mixed-use projects, mixed-use sites. However, because Osprey Point is relatively constrained, it's got industrial development to the east, rail barges, et cetera, Columbia River to the south, historical residential to the west, and it's got rail line and industrial land to the north. It's relatively constrained and I think it's limited to roughly 38 acres. And because it's being master-planned out, the options are a little bit more limited even though the regulations there allow quite a bit of flexibility. Whereas allowing a mixed-use district citywide, which would be applicable or permitted under the mixed residential-commercial land use, you have to put in additional requirements to ensure, because you're not constrained to just one or two parcels. You could be on Court Street, you could be on Burden Boulevard, definitely be in the Broadmoor area, Sylvester Street, et cetera. There's a lot more opportunities for it. And I think that's what the proponent and certainly staff agrees with, allowing the additional flexibilities. I think one thing we've noticed as staff looking both at our municipal code with regards to zoning and many other communities who have these kinds of developments is that their codes tend to be much more longer and sometimes much more complex. And so our hope is to write the code in a manner that which is easy to apply from a city staff perspective and certainly easy to understand and move forward with from the private or the applicant side.
Thank you. Yeah, so that's like the remedy if another Osprey Point were to come up, we would have to, we could always update this language with another section for whatever point or whatever. Okay. And then a couple just, and maybe for the applicant. I, not being a builder, when you say that building height limitations, I saw like 85, 90, 40, 45, and 15. Is that like number of stories? Is it like three-story, two-story, one-story? Is that how that height is arrived at? I'm not a builder, so.
Yeah, it's a great question. That's measured in feet and an average story is about 10 feet. So that'll give you a little picture of how tall some of these buildings could be. I believe... I can't remember the exact height in Osprey Point, but these were not too far off. We did look at your existing code, too, so we didn't suggest anything that would be egregious or very different from what the city already allows.
So we're looking at max six to eight stories max or something like that, depending on the building and the style and all that. Okay. And then last little niggly question. So I noticed the block length is 600. Is that, we've been looking at block length in other code. Is that consistent with the other stuff we've been working on or is it different? I think I remember it is, but I...
So our current block length is 1,320 feet. There's a pending code amendment to decrease it to 660 feet. In this case, staff and the proponent, Emily and her team, met and some of the benefits of the mixed-use district are realized with shorter block lengths. It increases connectivity, walkability, accessibility, et cetera. So typically, you don't see mixed-use projects with these suburban-style development patterns.
Excellent. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sure this is probably taken care of in the code in some way, but going back for a minute to the height restrictions. Sloping roofs, I'm sure there's some provisions in there as to where the height would be applied to a sloping roof.
Commissioner Henderson, it's midway between the eaves and the peak, essentially.
Like halfway?
Roughly.
Yeah, yes.
And then there's provisions.
Yeah, I thought that. I just wanted to...
Great. Any other questions from commissioners before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Mendez. I got a question on signage.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so it appears that you plan to revise or adopt changes to protect against unsafe signs. Did you mean unsafe signs from a safety perspective? Or are you talking about the content of the sign, something that could be objectionable?
No, that was not meant to be based on content because regulating contents of signs gets a bit tricky with First Amendment. So this proposal is just for safety in terms of like imitating road signs or location too close to the right-of-way, that sort of safety hazard issues.
Is that similar to the I-82 overlay standards currently in place?
Yes, yeah, they're pretty much, they're very similar. I think there are only a few minor changes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else? Commissioners, before we open the public hearing?
I just have one clarifying question, since I'm new to this. And I just wanted to make sure I was understanding this correctly. So when you started out saying that this would, excuse me, be an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan and allow this mixed use to then be like an option for people to apply for? So when you say citywide, is that like across the board? Even in residential sections or how does that work? I just want to maybe get a little bit of background on that piece on what does that mean when you're asking for this to be an amendment? And then for citywide applicability?
I can answer that. So the change to the Comprehensive Plan, which actually will come up in, I think, the next item on tonight's agenda. Currently, the city has the mixed residential and commercial... Uh, currently the city has the mixed residential and commercial land use, which, uh, permits residential at the R one, R two, R three, and R four zoning districts. So single-family detached to apartments. It also allows for the C one, uh, retail business district, so, uh, your business restaurants, malls, et cetera. And it's got, uh, the office district as well, which is office. Uh, and while the intent of the mixed residential, commercial district is to allow for more mixed residential sites, mixed-use development, currently the city does not actually have a standard that actually allows that. Um, you can get there in a tricky way using the planning unit development ordinance or, uh, putting residential on top of the first floor if the, if there's an association between the two. But, um, from a practicality standpoint, right now in the city of Pasco, there is not a code that allows you to develop a three-story mixed-use building, a two-story mixed-use building, or technically even a horizontally built mixed-use site, which has got pockets of residential with pockets of commercial. Um, so this code would, uh, really implement, um, a, an established land use by the city of Pasco. And, uh, I think the approximate acreage of mixed residential, commercial, built and vacant is four hundred and thirty acres. And so when we do change comprehensive plan land uses, that's when that would change potentially where this could be located. Um, but in terms of how this would be implemented from a, a process standpoint, assuming that this amendment moves forward through council and is a recipient of a yes approval, a mixed residential, commercial land use, uh, with a current zoning district of C one or R three, for example, the applicant would have to apply for a rezone. So a rezone from a C one to the mixed-use zoning district, rezones, um, would then require a public hearing with the hearing examiner, which would vet the application versus the municipal code and then a final decision by the city council.
Great. Well, if there are no more questions from the Commissioners, um, I'll go ahead and open it up, the public hearing. Um, individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. Again, please state your name and city of address for the records. No one online? No one in person? All right, I'll make the second call for anyone who wants to speak on this in the public hearing. And finally, the third call. Hearing done, we will turn to, uh, what's next. Uh, I think the staff gave us two options. Um, one option is to close the public hearing on this proposed code amendment and go ahead and, uh, move it to this, recommend the council that, uh, be, has defined. And then there's also, uh, an option to continue the public hearing to next month and continue discussions on this. So I'll entertain a motion, uh, from the Commissioners on either of those options. Anyone? No motions? Nothing on that? Uh, question, point of order, do we, I don't know that to continue it, we have to have a motion, do we?
It would just be cleaner.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, can you state the options?
Here you go. These are the two, two options staff has for us.
Commissioner Cochran, if my, just, uh, the, the reason why staff wanted to provide two motions or two options for the planning commission was because this is the first public hearing for the amendment. And if, uh, there, uh, was comfort with the proposal, then option one, uh, would recommend that you close the hearing and move forward to council. And if there were concerns, um, or remaining questions that have not been adequately addressed this evening, um, then the motion number two would likely be applicable, which is to continue the public hearing and come back to the planning commission.
Yeah, thank you. I thought, that's what I understood as well, so thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Mendez.
Yes, go ahead.
To continue the public hearing on the proposed code amendment for the mixed-use zoning district, CA two zero two two dash zero zero, to the January twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I second that.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Mendez and seconded by Commissioner Handler. Um, all those in favor of option two, which is to continue the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the pass, option two passed unanimously. So I think we'll, I guess we'll bring this back to January's meeting or meetings.
Yeah, we'll, we'll confirm that this, this evening. Um, staff would just, um, would welcome any feedback on particulars to address, um, so that we can come back in January with, uh, uh, an ordinance that addresses your concerns.
Yeah, Commissioners, if you have any feedback, I think one of the, probably what it is is that there's, uh, probably just a willingness on the Commissioners' part to allow the development community and others to, to be heard and we didn't have any tonight. So, um, I don't know if you have any comments on the engagement you've had with the development community. Obviously you have an applicant that probably represents a development community member, so.
Yeah, I, I think, um, this proposal was initiated privately, so it wasn't initiated by staff.
Okay, yeah.
I think had it been initiated by staff, that we would certainly recommend, uh, more input. Uh, but because this was initiated privately, um, staff agrees with the proposal. Um, but we can certainly, uh, notice for a second public hearing in January.
Yeah, I think that's what's been moved. I mean, I guess I would, my counsel to all of us on the commission is if we don't have any feedback or any changes, then, um, we probably need to move forward with this. Or if nobody in the audience has any changes, then we probably should try to support this in January. Otherwise, provide feedback. And I think we can provide feedback during the month if somebody comes up with something too, so.
Excellent. All right, so the second item open, uh, on the public hearings agenda is a staff report on the Broadmoor master plan and the environmental impact statement. So I'll turn it over to, I assume, Jacob for that.
Uh, greetings, members of the planning commission. Again, uh, staff is preparing, uh, to issue, uh, both the Broadmoor master plan and the associated non-project environmental, environmental impact statement. Um, next slide, please. Uh, the, the purpose of the staff report today is to provide the planning commission with an update on the progress of both the, the master plan and the EIS itself. Um, issuance of both the plan and the EIS are expected to occur actually tomorrow afternoon. Um, so we wanted to, on this slide, just to give you a quick summary of both the, um, highlighting purposes of both the plan and the impact statement. Um, with regards to the master plan, the, the primary intent is to follow the established visions and purpose identified by council and input from the community and integrate, um, our current and new planning policies that actually achieve, uh, the vision and purpose of the Broadmoor planning area. Uh, specifically, it identifies, uh, development standards, similar to what you saw just in the prior, uh, item. Uh, very specific regulations and standards. Um, but with any other plan, like any other plan, it is intended to be updated and amended over time. Uh, so it isn't a plan that, um, is adopted and left alone. It is a plan that we intend to keep up to date as necessary. So it, it could likely come back in two years, uh, with some minor, um, refinements. And with the environmental impact statement that's associated with the plan, with the, uh, development and planning for an area of twelve hundred acres, there's quite a bit of, um, uh, adverse environmental impact, which is why EIS was, uh, determined to be required. Uh, so the, uh, EIS will identify the necessary mitigations, uh, with regards to transportation, the infrastructure, habitat, both built, natural, and, uh, cultural, and, uh, alignment with council rules, municipal code, and comprehensive plans. So both of these documents are intended to sort of be viewed simultaneously together, um, with their own specific details. Wanted to give a quick summary of the timeline. Technically, planning for the Broadmoor area began in two thousand and four. There was a market analysis, so this has been going on for quite some time. But again, this is a area of over twelve hundred acres, uh, which is much larger than many communities and, and downtowns and other cities. Um, and so throughout this process, uh, there's been a lot of refinements, a lot of analysis specifically with regards to the infrastructure, including transportation. Uh, we heard a presentation, uh, last month regarding the tax increment finance district to actually make sure that, uh, both planning and funding, uh, the, uh, infrastructure is in place prior to the development, so getting ahead of the development there. And also the, uh, mitigation measures, uh, have been, uh, refined, uh, so that, uh, we can mitigate the adverse environmental impact. So right now where we're at today in December is we're preparing for, uh, the issue both the plan and the EIS. And they will go through their, uh, required public comment periods over the next several weeks. So next slide, um, this is the preferred alternative. And so this differs from the comprehensive plan land use, which had a variety and much more land use allocations. And so what we've done is simplify that. And then, uh, we did have to reallocate a lot of the land uses. We had to shift a little bit of where the open space was, where the commercial was, where the residential was, et cetera, uh, because of the development that happened throughout the planning effort. Um, and also reacting to forecasts and market demand. So you see here a much more refined and simplified land use. And on the next slide, um, this is the proposal for the street network. And, uh, the street network in the Broadmoor area, in order to really implement this walkable, uh, multimodal accessible, uh, neighborhood or neighborhoods, uh, you really have to have, have to have a connected street system. And we're able to do that by implementing the re, uh, recommendations of the, uh, transportation system master plan, the, uh, twenty eighteen, uh, comprehensive plan, taking advantage of the tax increment finance district, and also, uh, accommodating the, uh, existing and the pending developments that have been permitted, um, over time in the Broadmoor area. So you see a much more tighter, uh, network to support, um, uh, thousands of new, uh, residents and, and thousands of new jobs. And on the next slide, you'll see a similar, uh, plan for our bike pad, our multimodal transportation network, which will, for the most part, follow the street network, but will be differentiated by multi-use pathways. Multi-use pathway in Pasco, um, you could look at the, uh, pathway that exists on Chapo Hill Boulevard or on Burns Boulevard. Those are multi-use pathways, you also see separated bike facilities or on-street bike lanes. And again, this is implementing the, uh, T S and P, the transportation plan, the comp plan, um, supported with the tax increment finance district, and again, aligning with the existing and pending developments. And so we wanted to, there's a variety of maps in the plan, we didn't want to show all of them to you today. Uh, but we wanted to at least show some of the maps that we know the public has been asking for, for, for many years, which is, uh, how are we going to accommodate this with, with the transportation system? So on the next slide, um, it's kind of difficult to see, but each element required in the, in the environmental impact statement or the draft EIS requires the city to identify mitigation measures. Now, these may change based on public and agency feedback we get over the next thirty or so days. Um, but in total, we have a hundred and four, a hundred and five total mitigation measures. And you will notice on transportation, there's forty-seven. And that represents projects, um, code standards, uh, improvement requirements, et cetera. Um, we believe that our EIS that's been developed for this, uh, really represents a refined, um, project here. And, uh, here's an example of what you would see for kind of summarized, uh, mitigation measures. On transportation, you can look at the bottom, uh, promoting multimodal transportation by adopting connectivity standards. Um, similar to the mixed-use district, I, I think the idea of having a walkable, accessible neighborhood or, or part of the city is going to require the necessary utility. In this case, the, the, the road network itself to support that kind of growth, especially being located right off to, uh, right off of the Interstate one eighty-two and the growing demands on that facility. It's important for us to take, um, what we can and build the appropriate facilities to accommodate all that growth. For instance, on the historical and cultural resource, um, element, you'll notice that a off-site mitigation strategy has been identified. So it's essentially a contract that we've developed in partnership with the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Franklin, Franklin County Conservation District. So we do have a significant amount of area in the Broadmoor area that's been classified as shrub step habitat. So if there's a development proposed on that, they would identify, um, how much of that they would, uh, impact. And then there's a, a payment mitigation contract set up where, uh, off-site, uh, would be reserved, um, in, uh, partnership with the Conservation District of Franklin County. So that's what I mean by very specific mitigations, trying to get away from general statements of, uh, will, uh, reduce impacts. And our intent here is to actually identify what those impacts will be and how they will be mitigated as we move forward here. So next steps in process, um, uh, so as I, as I stated earlier, the intent is to issue both the plan and the EIS tomorrow. And so a public notice will go out and that it kicks off the public comment period. There's a thirty-day, uh, public comment period as required by state law, the Department of Ecology. And then that'll wrap up in January. We do have a question for the planning commission later on this evening about that particular date in January, so we can discuss that at the time. And then, uh, once it comes back to the planning commission and receives its decision, whether a recommendation or continuance, et cetera, it would move forward to the city council and then we issue the final EIS. And so because this is also tied in as a comprehensive plan amendment itself, um, we, we have to be kind of careful and, and, um, kind of explains why we would ask for, uh, uh, another date in January uh, for the planning commission to meet and discuss the item. But other than that, um, this really was just an opportunity for us to, one, open the public hearing. Uh, we're not making a recommendation on this tonight, we're not proposing that. Uh, but giving, um, just, uh, an opportunity for any public comment, if there is any today. We did receive one letter, uh, from a tenant in the Broadmoor area. Um, but we definitely expect a lot more as the notices go out and are publicized online, et cetera. So with that, happy to answer any question I can this evening from the planning commission. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioners, uh, questions, uh, on, uh, this plan and what Jacob presented?
So, uh, so, um, that's the master plan, the few, few slides back?
Uh, those, those are snippets from it. The, the plan will be, uh, uh, published tomorrow and that will be distributed to the planning commission. Yeah, it, it, a couple hundred pages.
Yeah, um, but the, the plan we saw shows a proposed, uh, circulation, uh, vehicular circulation.
Correct, and it only shows arterials, collectors, and neighborhood collectors. It, it does not go down into the local access road. Um, but those local access networks and those roads are, are identified, um, uh, in terms of the, the layout and the, the requirements for those in the, in the planning document.
And it'll show like proposed parks and, and riverfront access areas and, you know, stuff like that?
Uh, regards to, uh, parks, to an extent, um, we, we, you know, might be better for you, Rick, maybe to answer that. But, but we don't show specifically where neighborhood parks are going to be. Uh, but we did reserve space on the shoreline, uh, for open space. And, and then, uh, one of the mitigation measures is, um, ensuring that our level of service for parks is maintained. And so for instance, our parks plan has a specific level of service for what kind of facility based on the number of people. And so if a development comes through with one thousand dwellings and you average that by the number of, uh, how, uh, members per household, you'll get, you know, three thousand people. And, uh, the level of service says you need X amount of space for every one thousand people. And that's how we would ensure that park space, um, is, is, uh, provided in the Broadmoor area.
Right, right, and you know, the, and I'm not saying anything, we all understand the waterfront is kind of an important uh, asp- aspect of this whole thing. And, uh, I, I had even heard over the last few years that there was opportunity for maybe a, um, a, a marina down there. Uh, again, I'm not, it, it was, it has, has, has it been any conversation about that? No? Okay.
No, the, the waterfront is owned wholly by the Corps of Engineers. And, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, what they are doing with it now is what it's intended to be done with it forever, which is, uh, mitigate impact of the McNary Pool.
Okay, well, just, just a cute, just a couple of questions I have. Anyway, I'm curious to see when, when the plan comes out tomorrow and we can go from there. But anyway, I know it's a lot of work for you, so, thank you.
Other questions or feedback from the Commissioners?
I had a question about, uh, you mentioned the bike and ped paths. And, and also I think it goes with, uh, I think we're going to talk about the shoreline thing later on, you know, later in the year too. Does, will that be, is there a deliberate plan to try to link that up or model that after, say, the, the other side south of the bridge, like the Chihuahua side where the, I don't think we can really connect the Sacagawea Trail, but the idea that those ped and walking and bike paths would model that similarly? Model that similar structure where you have, you know, what what's Chihuahua South all the way to the Blue Bridge, you pretty much have a. Pedestrian bike path and you have the Army Corps kind of property.
I thi- I think in the future, uh certainly that that'll be a a topic to discuss and and warrants further discussion. In fact. The master plan of the E I S, the the draft E I S. Uh identifies that that waterfront area, the shoreline area between Court and Burns. Probably needs further study. Again, I I point out that twelve hundred acres is a fairly significant piece of of land. And um uh uh there's the increased development pressures, the closer you get to the interstate and Broadmoor Boulevard. But twelve hundred acres, just just for reference, is. Um roughly the same area between um. The stadiums in Seattle to the Space Needle between I five and the Puget Sound. So that's a significant piece of land. Um obviously, we have a different shape here. Um but we wanted to be careful not to overprescribe too far into the future. Forecasting is already difficult. Um and that's part of the reason why we wanted to make sure that this plan is written in a way that is that it can be updated and adaptable for. Uh needs in the future. So I would expect that. Particularly on the shoreline where we see, we we've, we have received significant comment with different projects and plans for the city. That there's gonna need to be additional effort um on the shoreline in the Broadmoor area.
Great, thank you. Uh any other questions? And we'll obviously open it up for a public comment here in a second.
Just, just one, you know, um now's the time. You know, whatever we wanna see happen out there, now's the time. So let's keep our thinking hats on and. Make this a nice plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Handler. All right, we're gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment. Again, we have no recommendations. This is just the first public hearing, so. But if you're here and want to speak on this item on the agenda night, please come forward and state your name and add a city of address for the record. All right, I will make a second call for uh to speak or comment or on this item.
Hi, my name is Courtney Witten. I am here to speak, but I'm over Zoom.
That's okay. Please go ahead. Please state your uh na- name again and city of city of address.
Yes, my name is Courtney Witten. I am coming from uh. Coming to you from Spokane. I'm located at six oh one West Riverside. Um but I am an attorney who represents American Rock Products. Um many of you may be familiar um with. The American Rock Products in the area, um but they have an interest in the central premix site. Um located um on a significant chunk of the the master plan area. Uh primarily in the middle. And um they operate the concrete plant. And an office, and then there's also an affiliate of American Rock Products. Who runs a retail business storefront at the site as well. And. American Rock Products is currently able to do all of those things through special use permits. Um and so why I'm here tonight is to ask the commission to consider um American Rock Products. Plans for going to the future as they implement this master plan. You can see on, I don't know if you can see the screen, but I can see the screen. Um you can see this area where American Rock Products has mined for years in the past. And they are reaching the point of uh beginning the reclamation process. And but they fully intend to continue their business and operations. Um the concrete plant, the retail front and um their. Business office. Office building um for at least the next ten years. And so what they would ask of the commission and then of the city is that as as they implement this plan. To. And what I see from Mr. Gonzalez tonight is that um where they are currently located. Um would be a mixture of residential um zoning and. So American Rock Products would ask that. That staff, look at this again, that they perhaps um could. Designate that area as light industrial, which would allow Ameri- yes, exactly, American Rock Products to. Um essentially wrap up its operations at the site. Um with some certainty that would be allowed through that zoning and not have to worry about. Applying for and being granted the special use permits. And. So they also see it as, they also see this kind of wrapping up process. That will be mutually beneficial to the city as it implements the Broadmore plan because they will have a concrete. Some or cement plant uh ju- right smack in the middle as they're building the infrastructure for. To implement this plan. So that is why I'm here and and they would just ask that you keep them in mind as as this is written and. In hopes that they can continue in that mutually beneficial partnership. Um and make the transition as smooth as possible. And then, as Mr. Gonzalez stated earlier. It will, it it they they will wrap up. Finish the reclamation project and then, of course, the area could be rezoned to residential, however dense that is. Um or whatever they may, that may look like in the future for the city. So that's why I'm here tonight. Um and we're happy to work with the city um going forward on this project.
Thank you for that feedback and for being here tonight. Commissioners, yeah, do you have questions for the respondent?
So my question is. You said that they they are functioning on special use permits. And you said that they uh plan to continue on for at least quote unquote the next ten years. But it's all very broad and very vague on the um. When when their final shutdown plan is, if there is one. And so my question is, if you want this considered. To continue business as they do. Um is is there an end date? Are we talking at least ten years from now, but it could be thirty? You know, I it it's just too broad for me right now.
Okay, um I don't have a specific end date for you, um but I do not believe that they intend. To be operating in the same thirty years.
Thank you.
Um maybe a quick follow-up question for you. Um considering that, um has there been any um? I guess plans or anything shared with like either staff or. Um maybe anything drafted that you could share at this point um with the staff or the commission? On their future plans?
My understanding is it's just a winding down. So the lease of the mining. The lease that's on the land you can see in green there is is about to be expired and and. They will not be mining for gravel there any longer. Um. So that that's about all I have. I, we can certainly send. Um the city some more information if you like. We're happy to share. Um and give you guys more specifics um to help answer those questions, absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd probably encourage you to continue working with staff, maybe give them some more concrete. Kind of timelines and plans and that might help in their planning and development.
Thank you, Mr. Ed Chairman. Let me to interrupt if I can. I. I think Ms. uh Witten's concern, uh if I can paraphrase, she can correct me if I'm not doing it correctly, uh the. Conditional use permit for the mining operation and for the batch plant. And the lease, I believe, expired at either the same time or roughly the same time. And she's uh or American Rock will be. Assuming the lease is extended and that provides them the opportunity to apply for extending the conditional use permit. Uh it a conditional use permit is um. Probably not a preferred method of vesting for, let's say, a ten-year period. Uh the certainty for American Rock would come in their ability to. Uh have a land use designation that uh allows the operations outright. So that that's my understanding of of her concerns.
That's that's correct. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or um are there any other uh any others that wanna speak on this item on the agenda? All right, one final call. All right, we'll close the public hearing on this agenda and uh did yeah, did we have one more that wanted to speak? Okay, thank you. Thanks for it. Uh and there's no recommendation here, so we will disclose the public hearing and and move on. Uh the next item on our agenda. Uh is the staff report in the work- as a workshop item, and that's a staff report on the twenty twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan amendments. So go ahead.
Uh greetings again, members of the Planning Commission. Uh the purpose of this report is to provide the Planning Commission with an update. On the twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan amendment uh docket. Um this is the second of two workshops to discuss the individual amendment proposals and evaluate them per the requirements of the Pasco Municipal Code. On the next slide, you will see the uh specific criteria identified in the Pasco Municipal Code, the PMC. Uh which to evaluate ea- each application. Uh generally, these are based on the consistency with adopted council goals, policies, plans and the conference plan itself. And on the next slide, you see the additional factors uh for consideration. Um when basing a decision to recommend uh approval, denial or modification of each of the applications prepared uh for the docket. Uh these uh cover a wide variety of topics, including compatibility with surrounding land uses and neighborhoods. Impact on community facilities, public utilities, infrastructure such as transportation or parks. Uh the quantity and type of a proposed land use amendment and the effect on the comprehensive plan itself. And so uh these criteria will be those that uh staff uses to help us provide initial recommendations to the Planning Commission, not this evening. Uh but at a public hearing in January. And so on the next slide, we break down uh the number of total applications. You may recall that there was eighteen that begin with after council. Uh recommendations and establishment of the docket. Um that was a pared down to sixteen, so there are ten private um applications initiated by members of the public. And six initiated by the city. And um over the next several slides, uh we wanted to bring these back to you. I can uh we can go through them um at the pace the commission is comfortable with, but. It's been some time since you've seen these, but these are still the same amendments you saw back uh in the spring. Uh this is a land use amendment in the Broadmoor, uh just north of the Broadmoor and uh. Burns Road intersection and it's a proposal to change approximately four acres from medium density. To mixed residential and commercial. Again, that land use allows a a variety of land uses from single-family detached to apartments. To commercial and potentially mixed-use zoning districts in the future. And on the next slide, you see a similar proposal from low density to mixed residential and commercial. Uh for a site of about two acres uh located uh to the northwest of Argent and Road sixty-eight. So this is south of Interstate one eighty-two. And here you have um a proposal that would amend the land use from industrial to mixed residential commercial. This time, an area of approximately a hundred and ninety-seven acres. Um there was, I I call this not specifically because there's only two proposals that have an E I S associated with them, the Broadmore Amendment. And this amendment. Um this is an area located um kind of in the heritage, historical heritage industrial site. So this is. Uh north of the Port of Pasco area, uh in between the uh Amazon facilities and the local bounty facility. So that would be in between there. Uh this is a uh proposal that would change the land use from low density to medium density. Uh this is located uh further north on uh Broadmore Boulevard. Um to the west, uh I'm sorry, to the uh west of Broadmore Boulevard, north of Burns Road. Uh for about thirty-three acres from uh low density to medium density. Uh another amendment from commercial to mixed residential and commercial for about twelve acres. This is located. In the expanded urban growth area. It was annexed into the city um for about twelve acres. Uh this might be difficult to see, but this is located um. Uh off of Clemente Lanes where that root uh that Wrigley Drive extension uh was built a couple years back. Uh from commercial to mixed residential, commercial for about two and a half acres. Uh this is uh in the Chapel Hill one eighty-two area. Uh for about four and a half acres and the proposal here is to go from commercial to mixed residential and commercial. So there definitely is a theme. In twenty twenty-two for that that particular land use. And again, a low-density proposal to mixed residential, commercial for about twenty acres. Um again, located uh north of that Broadmore-Burns uh intersection. And uh this is a proposal to go from commercial to high-density residential. Um this is located uh just north of Court Street, I believe, along Road tw- uh North Road twenty-eight or Twenty-Eighth Avenue. Uh to high-density residential for about eight and a half acres. And uh this is another one to go from commercial to mixed residential, commercial. This time located just north of Court Street and uh west of Road sixty-eight, uh west of Road sixty-eight for about seven acres. And now we get into the city-initiated land use amendments. This is a proposal to establish a brand-new land use specifically for downtown. This is a recommendation from the Downtown Pasco Master Plan. Uh which is scheduled to be um adopted by City Council on January third. And so this uh would be a land use that accommodates a wide variety of development flexibility and development intensity. Um particularly to increase um housing, uh mixed-use projects if uh if the applicant or the private developer see uh. Wishes to do so. And uh along this, we are actually proposing that uh we would um not. Have a maximum density in this land use, particularly because it's a limited area. It's an area where traditionally you would expect to see more intense development in a downtown. And uh with height restrictions, setback regulations, um lot sizes that are uh historically smaller than the rest of the cities. Inherently, most of these sites are are limited to the amount of density they could do in the first place. Um however, um if a land use in this area did want to exceed our current zoning requirements, and this is the case today too. Um they would have to apply for a special permit. So there's still some parameters in place, so you don't uh end up with a super tall building without knowing about it. Um so that, but this is a recommendation of the Downtown uh Master Plan. And uh this is an item we just covered uh quite thoroughly, the Broadmore Master Plan, again, a determination of significance, AKA the E I S. Um uh being prepared for this. And we would also recommend uh that that density uh flexibility be allowed here because, again, you're still limited by the additional. Uh district standards that limit the intensity of a project itself. And next we have several map corrections. A map correction is is essentially um. We have a land use and a zoning district and a current use that um don't match. And so in this case, uh we have a residential dwellings that exist in a commercial land use. Um which technically makes them non-conforming and we um it can be troublesome. So this is just a map correction to change it to mixed residential and commercial. And uh this is a similar uh map correction, this time located uh on Court Street in between um. I believe Tenth Avenue and Sixteenth Avenue. Uh again, there's existing multifamily in our commercial land use. Uh this would change it to mixed residential and commercial. Uh this one is located uh just north of the Cable Bridge on Tenth Avenue, uh south of A Street. Um we actually get quite a few calls from uh this this particular neighborhood where they're trying to sell homes. Can't because the land use in the zoning district don't match with the existing home. Uh so this would be a um. Um a long, long-winded fix for this one. And then we have um variety of changes for the land use table and the descriptions and criteria. And then we have um, variety of changes for the land use table and the descriptions and criteria, which is what you see on the screen uh, today. So on the right side, you see a table. Uh, this is a snippet of what you would see in our land use table. So for example, in the low density residential, uh, we would propose to increase the density from two to five units to three to six. This uh, certainly aligns with uh, many of the policies of our comprehensive plan. It also allows our infrastructure to be utilized a little bit more efficiently. Um, we have uh, proposed to uh, to kind of simplify some of the languages, so our um. Purpose statements aren't so lengthy, um, simplifying some of the housing units, et cetera. And uh, adding uh, additional language to the mixed residential, commercial um, for the compatibility of commercial, retail, residential uses and potentially. A mixed use zoning district. And on the left, you see a proposal to remove the maximum density from the uh, Broadmore planning area. Uh, the downtown land use and the mixed use zoning districts, uh, because those again would be limited uh, by the development standards themselves. Um, as you can see there, the densities are constrained, limited by lot size, height, maximum lot coverage, setbacks, off-street parking, et cetera. And so on the next slide. Uh, I guess this is a duplicate, uh, next slide. Here, uh, in kind of the the remaining timeline, so we're here in December. And uh, uh, would do a public hearing and uh, have recommendations for the planning commission. And then those recommendations um, if uh, acted on would then be forwarded to city council in February, March. So, quick update, um, this is gonna be a lengthy uh, meeting next month and we'll, we can discuss it on the next item.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there questions for staff on uh, these uh, amendments? Uh, these are the ones I remember, we went through a tedious voting process to come up with these, right? I remember that meeting, um, uh, and it was, uh. So I I noticed, so I remember that was also, a lot of these were fair, there was fairly good public response and and. So there'll be a notice goes out for another peer, public hearing and we'll get some of those same folks back. Um, and uh, next month. I I noticed noted that some, so it looks like the only one that. The only one I noted was number eight, that is something we recommend, we pl- we recommended for the docket, all the rest were. That's the only one that's noted as planning commission recommended.
Was that McClory, Mr. Chairman?
That was Travis Blake.
This is the north twenty eighth, uh, just north of Court Street.
Uh, it's CPA two thousand, twenty twenty two zero zero eight. And it says, I was just noticing in the, in what you sent us. Uh, none of the others have planning commission recommendations, but this one does.
Oh, you, that that's a, that's a discrepancy in the staff report, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, the the ones, actually technically.
I was just, that was confusing, because I thought, well, I thought we recommend more than one.
Yeah, definitely, and in fact, the only one that uh. Uh, with the, the, the two that were pulled from the uh, council, uh, their docket. Uh, was the Hopkins Street proposal, you may recall, ne- located next to the Blue Bridge, that was not recommended to move forward. And the uh. The uh. Yeah, and one applicant pulled their application, sorry, uh, so that removed two. However, council did vote to add the land use amendment that was located on Court Street on Twentieth Avenue. That was not recommended by the planning commission. Council decided to vote that one onto the docket, so that'll be before you again in January.
Excellent, thank you. Other questions on these, it's just a workshop, so we have no recommendation or anything, but. All right, well, go ahead.
Yeah, you, um. Are some of these projects kind of overlapping the uh, Broadmore master plan? And is there any conflict there or?
No, uh, the the co- the, certainly no conflict, it it's more of a logistics, um. Uh, uh, effort where uh, the, in order for the Broadmore master plan to be adopted. The comprehensive plan amendment associated with it needs to be adopted, so. We can't move forward with the plan without it being amended, because we're amending the comprehensive plan, so we have to do one before the other.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, in fact, I think some of these were, are, some of these are making their, their second or third run at this as well. Because they didn't get it in the plan, and so now they're making it in the amendment. So I'm, I think I re- I recognize that one on the corner, that's a gas station, I think it's the third to try, so. So we'll have that before us next month, and we'll probably have a lively group uh, to to support that, so. All right, um, I think the next uh, other business or uh, is is really to talk about our plan, our work plan for twenty twenty three. And probably the big first topic is just the January meeting meetings, uh, and what what uh, we have, it sounds like a big meeting. And whether you want to eat it two, two bites at a, two bites or one bite, right?
Yeah, and um. The uh, movement of the, or potential movement of the planning commission meeting to the fourth Thursday of the month. Uh, would give us a little bit more time if if the commission wants to consider that to prepare. Uh, um, what's going to be a very large volume of uh, background and uh. Uh, resource heavy uh, analysis into the eighteen or sixteen, I guess, planning commit, or comprehensive plan amendments. But that being said, uh, the other upcoming planning commission items, um, just real quickly, um. You'll be in assoc- in association with downtown master plan, you'll be getting a um, series of code amendments of for murals in the downtown area. Most likely not for a citywide effort, but it it'll, it'll probably be focused on uh, the downtown area that you saw probably on the expanded boundaries. Just a few minutes ago. Uh, you'll have um, a number of items with the downtown plan implementation. Uh, we uh, proposed in the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget. That uh, the city contract out for that with uh, the con- same consulting firm that did the downtown master plan itself. Because they're here, they're familiar with the area, they have a, a real, um. They have a real desire to seize a plan that they have helped prepare, uh, get seen to its fruition. And then um. Of course, we talked about the Broadmore master plan, E I S. Uh, we had our first public forum Tuesday on the housing action and implementation plan. So that will be further work at increasing housing accessibility and affordability. Uh, we had a stakeholder meeting Tuesday, I think there were twenty, maybe twenty attendees, a mix of private and public uh, agencies. It was well attended and uh, they offered a lot of information and and perspectives. Uh, the shoreline master plan, as I was mentioning to Commissioner Moffett earlier today and and Commissioner uh, Torres. Uh, probably not uh, very um. Deep or or complex, it's a series of mandated uh, state amendments to the shoreline master program. That uh, will be considered by the commission. Um, the uh, economic development plan, brand new effort, uh, will probably have a consultant chosen within the next couple of weeks. Uh, the city of Pasco's first economic strategy plan. Uh, we've kind of operated on the coattails of the comprehensive plan for a number of years. But given the the circumstances and the good luck, good fortune we've had with kind of setting the table. For economic development, we're starting to realize some of those, uh, some of the fruits of those efforts. So we're ch- we're gonna look, what's next? What what's next for the uh, next twenty years and and what and what can we do in making sure Pasco continues to be successful economically? Um, other items, uh, you probably recall the single room occupancy uh, issue. Uh, planning commission passed a code amendments uh, for that, it's probably been about three years ago now. Uh, but there is currently a council uh, uh, supported moratorium on single room occupancy units. So I think that expires in March of next year, March of twenty 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 three. Uh, we'll be looking at either continuing the moratorium, probably in alignment with our housing action plan. Um, we'll expect that that particular issue will be further explored to give you a better analysis of. Um. What kind of role single room occupancy units play in providing affordable housing. Uh, anti-displacement and disparate impacts analysis, uh, again, uh, this is um. A um, effort that will be coming most likely with our cyclical update, our next cyclical update, unless it's happening before, I can't remember now. Yeah, and that'll be addressed also through our housing action plan. Uh, what it does essentially is make sure that the efforts we have with um. Zoning code revisions, housing and a variety of other issues and and infrastructure questions. Don't have a disparate impact on a particular social or economic segment of our citizenry. Traffic impact fee update, can't wait for this one. Um, it will be an analysis by a a consultant. That uh, is going to take a hard look at the projects particularly listed in our transportation system master plan. And there are a ton. And uh, they'll try to gauge and offer a recommendation on a transportation impact fee. Uh, that will help fund some of those projects over a initially a six year period, in line with our capital improvement plan. And then looking longer term, in line with our comprehensive plan for a twenty year period. Uh, our new city engineer uh, is going to uh, begin work uh, on updates to our city standard development. And uh, infrastructure specifications, uh, they're called the development standards, and that's um. Uh, a booklet that uh, identifies how you do things, how you build roads, how you build sidewalks. How you install utilities, et cetera. But but it will also be a very major undertaking. Uh, a lot of work with the development community, a lot of back and forth, I think the last time this happened. Maybe six years ago. Um, and so uh, I'm certain that there will be significant changes in in the approach as we move forward with that effort. So to wrap up this last meeting of twenty twenty two, you get to look forward to kind of exploding in twenty twenty three. When, you know, the new year hits and all the things we've been thinking about. Another slide? Oh, uh, sorry, I forgot to click the um, the um, advance, but uh. Again, the nineteenth is your normal meeting date, and then the twenty sixth, as I mentioned, would be uh, if acceptable to the commission, would be um. Uh, preferred, at least from a staff perspective, because of the additional time it gives us to prepare the the uh, information.
So you're saying no, uh, not meet on the nineteenth, but defer it to the twenty sixth?
Oh, well.
Or or meet both?
That is another option, um, there are some items, uh, for example, the uh, um. Mixed use zoning district that could be perhaps taken care of on uh, the nineteenth, your normal meeting date. And then we would reserve the twenty sixth for, let's say, the comprehensive plan amendments.
Okay.
Um. There's. He he, I I don't want to scare anybody, but the the meeting on the twenty sixth, if it's the only meeting of the month. Would probably need to start earlier and could go quite late, so. Whatever that means.
Well, go ahead and uh, I'll open it up for comments for the commissioners. I, I know for me, if we move it to the twenty sixth, I am probably ninety percent out of the country. And so we'd have to ensure Vice Chair Mendez could chair the meeting, so. Lucky you, men, Commissioner Mendez. Um, but um, I'm I'm open to doing whatever uh, the commissioners decide, I just know that I might not be here the twenty sixth, so.
Uh, this Commissioner Mendez, that being the case, I booked for January the nineteenth, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have a preference or um? I mean, I, it sounds like we can, uh, the only downside of doing the nineteenth is we put a lot of pressure on staff. Uh, to prepare everything for the nineteenth, so I think that's the hard part.
Uh, it it makes no difference to me, but the nineteenth is also the Ag Hall of Fame. If that makes, if that makes any difference to anybody.
Ag Hall of Fame?
The.
The Agriculture Hall of Fame at the, at the track or.
Yeah, the red line they have. No, no big deal.
Okay.
Oh.
Um, is there any possibility actually, given the amount of things that need to be discussed, and it sounds like the Broadmore project is. A very uh, big um, rock. Um, with there being an opposition to doing both meetings, and then that way we could take care of some things on the nineteenth and then on the twenty sixth. You know, kind of leave more time and then so it's not an exhaustive, you know, run where it's, you know, a five, six hour meeting.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it re- would require a quorum on both dates, which is can be challenging. Um, and it would require, um, I could certainly chair the nineteenth and uh, Commissioner Mendez would have to chair the twentieth or. Yeah, the twenty sixth, sorry.
I I'm okay for either day.
Are you okay for both?
Uh, I'm okay for both.
Yeah, I'm okay for both, um. Are you, are you hard set on Thursday, is there a reason we can't do it another day? Because as you're talking, yeah, i- it sounds like we really need the twenty sixth very badly, it's a very long meeting as well. Does it have to be the twenty sixth, can we go the twenty fifth or some some other date in there that everybody could make it to and make it work?
Uh, yeah, if we could do, I mean, if it's, I know I leave on the twenty fifth, so if it's a, or before the twenty fifth, I could even make that week.
Why don't, why don't we do this, uh, since we're missing three commissioners anyway? Why don't we uh, pull the commission? Yeah, and we'll, we'll put four options.
Good idea, yeah. And then we'll just figure it out, okay? Anything else on that topic or other, uh, other, other, other business?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm pinch hitting tonight, Jacob's uh, he's having, he's had a whatever everybody has.
He's keeping you on us, all right?
Yeah, well, I, and I just want to uh, mention that uh, the planning commission has done a number of things this past. Well, this past two and a half, three years, uh, but in particular, uh, you'll see on the screen, uh, the accomplishments from just this past year. Uh, look at the two bottom bullets, uh, public hearings, workshop items, that represents a lot of work and a lot of input. And um. You know, I I go uh, to every single council meeting and I I don't, I can't think of. How many times the commission's recommendation has ever been questioned or um. Dismissed or, uh, you know, lessened in any manner from what you've put forth. Um, so I think, again, given the workload, given what you see on the first four bullets and the two bullets below. I think that's something to really um, give everybody a pat on the back for. Um, it's a very valuable role, uh, it allows public hearings to be held in a manner that uh, promotes public input. Uh, because that's not always the case at a council meeting, it's, they're always, they're always very full agendas. And the time is very limited to what you can express, so. Again, um, thank you for the commission and commission's work and particularly your devotion of time and and effort to. Uh, really digging into the packets and understanding the the issues.
Well, thank you, and each of those things represents tenfold the work for you guys, so. You know, you guys have to prepare all that.
Well, we, we like it here every weekday, so.
Well, excellent, thank you. All right, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded, so we are adjourned at seven fifty eight P M, thank you all.